All right, well, good morning and welcome everyone, those of you who are here and those of us who are joining us on our live stream on YouTube. As I said, please turn to Acts 27, but we're going to open with a word of prayer. So let us pray. Loving God and Father, we thank you that in these moments we have your word before us and we have your Holy Spirit to guide us. We have this treasure in our hands that we call the Bible and all too often we fail to read it, we fail to let its words challenge our hearts and change our minds. As we read the New Testament today and as we watch our DVD together, may we hear your voice sounding in our ears, may we receive your strength and your guidance and respond to what you would say to us. We pray for the members of our own family, our church family, those whom we know. We pray for a peaceful resolution in Israel, in that turbulent part of the world where once again bombs are falling and people are dying. And we pray that that situation may cease and that a peace process may go forward and justice may prevail. We ask for your blessing and for your guidance now as we turn to your word in Jesus' name. Now, just to recap a little bit, you may remember Paul goes back to Jerusalem at the end of having completed the third missionary journey. Paul goes back to Jerusalem knowing the danger that he's under, knowing that his life is threatened, and a riot occurs. He goes, he tries to speak to the crowd, then he speaks to the Sanhedrin, all of which is a main problem. And Paul, for his own safety, is moved by the Roman garrison up to Caesarea. And he ends up in prison in Caesarea for two years. Now Palestine, what you have to understand is Palestine at this time was more of a powder keg than it had at any other time. There was a growing tension between the Jews and the Romans who controlled the country. They were occupying Palestine as they were occupying many countries around the Mediterranean. And the growing tension in the 60s led up to the final revolt and to the destruction of Jerusalem after a long and bitter siege in AD 70. So you're in the last period of Roman aggression in the country and Jewish antagonism towards the Roman authorities. Now, Paul, while he's in prison in Caesarea, encounters two Roman governors. First, Antonius Felix, somewhere around AD 59 to 60, and then the new governor comes in, a guy called Festus. And with the change of government, a change of governor, the Jews think they can take advantage of that, so they petition the new governor to send Paul back to Jerusalem. And the Roman governor is wise enough to say, "Well, instead of me sending him back to you, why don't you send a delegation up to me?" And he stays in Caesarea, he keeps Paul in Caesarea because the Jews, we know from Acts 25, that the Jews intended to kill Paul and that there were a suicide squad who had made an oath that they would kill him, bar any Roman soldiers guarding him. Then Festus, and then King Agrippa. Now, say a word about King Agrippa. He was the last of the Herod line, and he was as loathsome as most of the rest of his family were. He, apart from all his various other things, he was a great grandson of Herod the Great. You meet him here with his sister Bernice. It was widely believed that he had an incestuous relationship with his sister. She had been married off three times by the family, the first time when she was only 13 years of age. And she ends up, after this incident, she ends up going back to Rome with the Roman general Titus. He was the man who conquered Jerusalem and destroyed the whole city of Jerusalem. So she was quite a girl, as you can imagine, and King Agrippa was her brother. He was allowed to govern small parts of Galilee and Peria and so on. Now, the first governor is Felix. Now Felix is a very tough nut, but there's a reason he's a tough nut, and that is because he has a brother who is the emperor Claudius' right-hand man. Claudius doesn't make any decisions without Felix's brother. The two brothers had started life as slaves and had climbed up the ladder and through cleverness, natural talent, and sheer ruthlessness had made their way to the top. And the reason Felix was so confident was that if there were any complaints about how he governed Palestine or anything else, he knew that when it got all the way up to the royal palace, his brother would make sure everything was smoothed over and that the emperor Claudius would be on his side. So he had, as we might say, an ace in the hole. And while Claudius remained emperor, Felix was untouchable. But guess what happened? Claudius died, under somewhat surprising circumstances, we believe, and of course Nero came in as emperor. Well, that ended Felix's guarantee of protection and safety. And so the next emperor comes along, or the next governor comes along is Festus. Now Festus, the Jews think they're going to take advantage of Festus because he's new to being a governor, he's new in position, and they think that they can manipulate him. Felix did one thing as he left Palestine to appease the Jews, he kept Paul in prison. He didn't release him. He kept him in prison and thought, "Well, let my successor deal with this guy." And then Festus comes along and he takes over, and they, the Jews, hope to play on his lack of experience. But he is equally adept, and he says to the Jewish authorities, "Well, if you want to have a further trial of this man Paul, I'm not going to send him back to Jerusalem. You're going to have to send the high priest or a delegation up here and we'll have another trial." And that's what happens. Now, in Acts 27, we open with Paul setting off. Let's look at 27 together. "When it was decided that we would sail for Italy, Paul and some other prisoners were handed over to a centurion named Julius, who belonged to the imperial regiment." Did anyone notice the word "we" in the first line? Yeah. Remember what we saw before, in these "we" passages, which are scattered throughout the Acts of the Apostles? It means that Luke, as the author of the Acts of the Apostles, is journeying with Paul. He's on the ship with him, he's going with him to Rome, he continues with him, and then the letter abruptly ends. We'll see that next week. Now, they traveled some 70 miles up the coast. Could somebody turn their phone off? And then they go... They go from small islands, small harbors, and so on, because it was difficult to sail in those days. You didn't have the navigational aids, you didn't have control of the ship, the rudders were not as successful as more modern rudders, and so on. Steering mechanism was not as handy. And so the reason they set off on this journey is that Paul, I think, is beginning to get frustrated. He's worrying that the Jews will prevail and that he will end up going back to Jerusalem. And so he makes the, he makes the demand, which was the right of every Roman citizen, "I want to be tried before the emperor." And so they have no choice but to send him to Rome and have him stand before the emperor Nero. And Paul wants to get away from the power and the ruthlessness of the Jewish leaders and to get a semblance of a fair trial. Unfortunately, probably would have been better for Paul if he'd have been on trial before Claudius and not Nero. But also Paul feels that this particular, having been in prison for two years, he feels that this is a waste of time, a waste of valuable time. Now, as I pointed out to you last time, and I hope you remembered, in the Acts of the Apostles, Luke is selective in what he tells us and not exhaustive in what he tells us. He doesn't tell us about every place that Paul went, he doesn't tell us about every journey he made or every side trip that he made. He points out the ones that he thinks are important. We know, for instance, from epistles, we learn things that are not recorded in the Acts of the Apostles. So we know that Luke left some of the details out, but not really the key details. Now, take a look at verse 10. Or sorry, let's start with verse 9, Acts 27, verse 9. "Much time had been lost, and sailing had already become dangerous because now it was after the fast. So Paul warned, 'Men, I can see that our voyage is going to be disastrous and bring great loss to ship and cargo and to our own lives. But the centurion, instead of listening to what Paul said, followed the advice of the pilot and the owner of the ship.'" And so they set sail. Paul says then, "This is not a good idea. We're not doing a smart thing. This is going to be a disaster. We're going to run into great deal of trouble. We may lose the ship, we may lose the cargo, we may lose our lives," he says. But who listens to preachers? You know, they decide, "Well, what do you know? You know, theology, you're great, seamanship, not so much." You know, and so they totally ignore. The pilot says, "No, we should go." The owner of the ship and the cargo says, "No, we should go." So what happens? They go. And we will see what happens. Now, take, take a look further down in verse 21. We're going to see in more detail in the video, but I just want to remind you, verse 21 of Acts 27, Paul assures them, having ignored his advice, having run into trouble, here's what he says to them. "After the men had gone a long time without food, Paul stood up before them and said, 'Men, you should have taken my advice not to sail from Crete.'" Isn't it wonderful that even Paul couldn't resist saying, "I told you so?" "You should have taken my advice not to sail from Crete, and you would have spared yourself this damage and loss." But now, here's the important bit. "But now I urge you to keep up your courage, because not one of you will be lost, only the ship will be destroyed. Last night an angel of God, whose I am and whom I serve, stood beside me and said, 'Do not be afraid, Paul. You must stand trial before Caesar, and God has graciously given you the lives of all who sail with you.'" What does that slightly remind you of? Can you think of an incident in the Old Testament that might be a parallel? Jonah? Jonah is thrown off the ship, and why does he say to the people on the ship, "There's a vast storm, they're about to go down, the ship is about to sink." And he says, "Look, throw me over the side, and everything will be fine for you. Your ship will survive, you will be alive. Throw me over the side, because the reason you're having this storm, the reason you're having this tempest is because of me, because I'm running away from God, I'm running away from the clear instructions of God." And here is a somewhat similar situation, that Jonah promised that if they ditched him over the side, they would survive. And Paul is saying, "You're going to survive. The ship may be damaged, the ship may be destroyed, but no lives are going to be lost because God has promised I will reach Rome and you, all of you are going to be well, all of you are going to survive." So we're going to stop at that point and watch our video because Dr. Kahn sets it out well for us in that. So Chris, if we could play our video now, that'd be great. Chris? Has anyone ever been to Malta? You have, Roger and Ruth, you have. Okay. It's, it's quite a place. I wanted to, I wanted to read to you part of 2 Corinthians where Paul gives a catalog of all that he has endured for Christ up to that point. And whatever you think of Paul's theology, you cannot doubt his courage, his tenacity, his faith, his determination, that he's going to endure everything for Jesus Christ. And he's talking about certain people who have been boasting in the church in Corinth, and he says this, it's in 2 Corinthians 11. "I have worked harder, been in prison more frequently, been flogged more severely, been exposed to death again and again. Five times I received from the Jews forty lashes, minus one. Three times I was beaten with rods; once I was stoned; three times I was shipwrecked; I spent a night and a day in the open sea. I have been constantly on the move. I have been in danger from rivers, in danger from bandits, in danger from my own countrymen, in danger from Gentiles, in danger in the city, in danger in the country, in danger at sea, and in danger from false brothers. I have labored and toiled, often gone without sleep, have known hunger and thirst, and have often gone without food. I have been cold and naked. And besides everything else, I face daily the pressures of my concern for all the churches." That's quite a list, isn't it? All of those things that Paul endured. Does anyone have any questions about what we saw in the video or any comments? As you heard, the guy with the sailboat make the point that when he writes what I've just read to you, he had already been shipwrecked three times, and now this is the fourth time. Has anyone ever heard of Violet Jessup? Violet Jessup was a member of staff on the Titanic maiden voyage in April 1912, and she survived the encounter with the iceberg. Four years later, she was on the Titanic sister ship, the Britannic, which as soon as the Britannic was finished, soon as she came off the, from the shipyard, she was turned into a hospital ship in the middle of World War I. And she was fitted out as a hospital ship, and Violet Jessup became a nurse on the Britannic. And in 1916, that ship struck a mine off the Greek islands and sank, and she survived a second time. You wouldn't want to take a cruise with Violet Jessup, would you? Just in case. If she said, "Well, let's go to Alaska together," you'd say, "No, it's okay. I don't think I want to do that." Now, let's just pick up, just as we, as we close, you see that Paul... Paul gets to Rome. If you look at Acts 28, it's a wonderful account, by the way, the first number of verses, first 10 verses are an account of his three-month stay on Malta. And as Kahn has said, it must have been a sort of breathing space for Paul. He knew what was behind him, he knew what was coming up, he knew he was going to go to Rome, he didn't know how things were going to go. Would he be released? Would he be found innocent? Would he be able to preach? Would he be able to go on other journeys? He planned, as we know, to go to Spain. We don't know. Some scholars think he got to Spain, some scholars think he didn't. We can't be certain. We have no evidence that he did. But Paul would have been thinking about the future, and this three-month period on this friendly island of Malta must have encouraged him. And in those first 10 verses, you not only hear the message from Paul's lips, but you see the power from Paul's hands, where he's able to heal people. He starts with Publius's father, heals him of dysentery, and then they bring to him people on the island who are sick, and Paul is able to heal them and survives, at the very beginning survives being bitten by a snake. And so Paul then, in, after this period in Malta, three months of rest, three months to recharge the batteries, and he goes forward to Rome. And verse 11 of the 28th chapter tells how they set off on the final leg of the journey. Just want to point out a couple of things to you. Take a look at Acts 28, verse 17, because it tells what Paul's normal pattern was. Acts 28, verse 17 says, "Three days later he called together the leaders of the Jews. And when they had assembled, Paul said to them, 'My brothers, though I have done nothing against our people or against the customs of our ancestors, I was arrested in Jerusalem and handed over to the Romans. They examined me and wanted to release me because I was not guilty of any crime deserving death. But when the Jews objected, I was compelled to appeal to Caesar, not that I had any charge to bring against my own people. And for this reason I have asked to see you, talk with you, and it is because of the hope of Israel that I am bound in chains.'" And you see that they go on to say, "Well, we didn't get any letters about you from the leaders of the faith in Judea or anything." So Paul follows his normal pattern. He's under house arrest at this point. When he arrives in Rome, he's under house arrest, and later on he goes into an actual prison under the palace in Rome. But he does what he normally does. He can't go to the synagogue, so he asks the synagogue to come to him. He asks the Jewish leaders and elders to come, and he sets out his case. You see that he doesn't hide anything from them, he doesn't try to be in any way deceitful. He sets out what has happened to him in the past, how he's ended up in Jerusalem, the antagonism and enmity of the Jews and so on, and he's viewed in this way. Now, if you read that passage, you discover that Paul was successful with some of them. Some of them responded to what Paul was saying. Paul was saying, "Jesus really is the Messiah, even though the high priest and all his people say he wasn't. He really is the Messiah. Let me explain why he is," and so on. So he lays out his arguments and he makes his point. And so that begins Paul's Roman period. And next week, we're going to see the very end of Paul's life, and we're going to look a little bit just as an overview of the prison epistles. Remember that if Paul had not been input in prison, we would have lost letters like the Ephesian letter, Philippians, Colossians, Philemon, 1 and 2 Timothy. That's quite a chunk of the New Testament epistles, which are all prison letters. Does anyone have any questions just before we close? No? Okay, so I would ask you to read Acts 28 for next week, read the whole chapter again, familiarize yourself with the Malta. It's a wonderful, wonderful image of Paul on the island, helping the people. They respond to Paul. He manages to convert the leading Roman leader on the island, the consul of the island, and he reaches a lot of other people, plants the seed in Malta, and then has this wonderful three-month, if you want to say sabbatical, this opportunity to go forward, sort of maybe physically better, spiritually better, mentally better, being assured by God that he is going to go to Rome, that he is going to appear before the emperor, you know? And the point, maybe I didn't make it very well to you last time, the point I was trying to make about the parallels between Jonah and Paul was that the people surrounding each of them survived because the person in their midst was a servant of the living God. The people on Jonah's ship, that, the ship was not destroyed, it was not sunk in the storm, because Jonah realized all of the, all of what's happening is happening because of me, because I'm in rebellion against God, and if you throw me over, everything will be fine for you. Won't be too great for me, but it'll be wonderful for you. And Paul, not asking them to throw him over, but staying on the ship, but reassuring very frightened people, "You're not going to drown, you're not going to die. God has told me we're all going to survive. The ship will not survive, the cargo will not survive, but you're going to survive because I'm a servant of the living God, and God has assured me that this is what happens in the future." It's a great parallel, if you think about it, between those two great passages. Okay, thank you so much, everybody. Well, Jan's point is, how did all these letters from prison survive? And not, not to dodge your question, but we know, for instance, that some of the letters to the church in Corinth didn't survive. We looked at that last time. We reckon there maybe were four letters written to that church, only two of which we have, only two of which survived. But he did pass them on to people. I mean, you think there's people like Timothy, there's Titus, there's Luke, there's, there's all these people who are, you know, he's, he's writing a letter and saying, "Take this to Timothy." He's writing a letter and saying, "Take this to the church at Ephesus," and so on. So they're being delivered. I mean, the flippant answer is, how did these letters get delivered? It's because they didn't use the US Postal Service. That's, that's how they got delivered. So, but they, they got there, you know? And we don't know, we don't know of any that he wrote, apart from the example of Corinth, we don't know of any that he wrote that didn't survive, that didn't make it into the New Testament. We don't know of any others that did. But it is wonderful because they have such a wealth of wisdom and theology and so on. I mean, Kahn talked about Romans. Romans is Paul's classic work, and he wrote it to sort of set out his table, set out his stall to the Romans, because he's writing, as he mentioned and as we know, he's writing to a church that Paul didn't, hadn't visited, planned to visit, was a very important church because it's right at the heart of the empire, but he's setting out, "This is what I believe. This is..." This is my theology. This is my teaching. This is what you can expect from me when I do get to visit with you and I do get to Rome. And so he, it's a, it's a fantastic letter, very detailed, very, some parts of it a little bit difficult to follow, the, the trend of his argument and so on. But it's, it's a marvelous letter. And, and the other letters, I mean, look at the, look at 1 and 2 Timothy. It's advice from an old preacher to a young preacher, how to behave in church, how to behave as a pastor, how to behave as a preacher. You know, it's required reading in every seminary, you know? And, and so you've got all these other things. They're wonderful, wonderful letters. But if you read Acts 28, it'll prepare us for the final chapter, which will be next week. Okay, thanks, everybody.